Regular meeting of the school committee of the town of Foxborough. It's April 23rd, 2018. We have a full house, which is terrific. It's nice to see everybody and welcome back from school vacation. Tonight's agenda, we're going to recognize any visitors who want to be heard first. Then we will approve minutes. We then have a teaching and learning highlight that I actually requested. Featuring our music programs and some of our music students and staff from the Ahern Middle School and Foxborough High School. I think our music program is always a teaching and learning highlight. Probably could be here every week, but I thought with all the success they've had recently, it was time and Dr. Burdos agreed, so thank you for that, Dr. Burdos. Following the teaching and learning highlight, we are going to take up Foxborough High School Student Activity Account for the Spanish National Honor Society. We then will talk about digital report cards for the middle school and the high school with Dr. Burdos and Dr. Mello. We then have a number of policies that the committee's been reviewing. We have the second reading tonight of a non-discrimination policy, a policy on affirmative action for recruitment of staff, licensed employee hiring, equal educational opportunities, and school choice. So there are five second readings of five policies that we're going to spend some time on. Mr. Yukna will then give us a budget update as we start to wind down our school year. We have a donation. We're fortunate enough to have another donation to accept. This from the Partners in Patriotism. There's a line item I don't know much about called recognition of public service on the agenda. And then we have other matters that we'll take up. So before we begin, I want to just make a comment to my friend Joe Garrity. If you weren't here or didn't see the replay last week, Joe sat in this chair and did an outstanding job. He's been a probably, well, not probably, unquestionably the most dedicated member, student member of the school committee or quasi-member of the school committee since I've been here. And I just wanted to recognize Joe again for the great job that he did last meeting.
Thank you very much for the opportunity. Thank you for coming to pretty much every school committee meeting since ninth grade. This is my sixth year doing it.
Congratulations. Great job, Joe.
Great job, Joe.
Keep it going.
We always appreciate it.
Okay. So I just want, I thought Joe did a great job last meeting. I just wanted to make another comment on that. Okay, any visitors would like to be heard tonight? Mr. Haydecker, come on up.
Here.
Please. And Dick, you know the routine. If you'd just state your name and address, we'd appreciate it.
Dick Haydecker, Grove Street. I was getting the selectmen last week when I met with them on the same matter. I said I'd bring my son along, but unfortunately that would make two Dick Haydeckers at Town Hall, which is a no-no. But in any case, you know, I have a handout on the matter that I wanted to discuss. I'll be as brief as possible. I won't read this. You can read it better than I can. I'll just hit the highlights and leave you with the group behind me with their appropriate notation. What I was getting at with the selectmen and with you is where we seem to be heading on all of this. We've been at the Burl School now for six years. The first mention of it was 2012 at this meeting, and it was noted on Patch and several other social media bases. But after six years, we still haven't gotten the approved preliminary plans. I know Bill and I probably will get into this deeper tomorrow night. Hopefully, like in the past, we won't punch each other out, but we've had some noisy meetings, but basically, we're in a position that all that we have discussed to date has been Burl. When I brought up Taylor and IGO, I was told they will be discussed at the appropriate time. That was the comment of the superintendent and then other members of the committee, the former superintendent, excuse me. The issue was what are we intending to do for the other two elementarys at this time? In a conversation after one of the meetings with Bill Yukna, he mentioned whatever is being done at Burl will certainly be done at the other two schools, which was the first time I heard something was being considered, which is a plus in the whole process, that you're not going to just hang Burl out there and then work another 10 years for the Taylor or IGO and 10 years for the other. That whatever is being done educationally, internally, and what have you, will be done in all three at roughly the same time. That was the understanding I had, and this is a plus in the whole process. But it's the first plus that we've gotten into on this. The biggest problem on the building program as the state has now set it up is the building code. I'm not sure how deep you've gotten into the building code process and what it involves. But if you have a building and the lights work, you will have to spend millions of dollars to do earthquake protection, snow, ice, weight on the roof, changes internally, the horizontal and vertical support systems of the building code. If you look at the pricing of what we're dealing with, when we did the Ahern School and the high school, we didn't get into the heaviness of the building code. It was in the process of being corrected. Those two projects with the roofing and all the other stuff ended up, local cost somewhere around $15 million as we got through them. But to do two, 200,000 square foot buildings puts us in the classification of the Attleboro High School that you may have seen in the paper. 400,000 plus square feet for $256 million. 15 million to 256 million is one hell of a climb. We have two 200,000 square foot buildings that we have just renovated, that we'll have to renovate within, the first one, the Ahern, within possibly 10 to 15 years because the roof warranties expire, the glass warranties, the heating systems, these have to be redone. But the minute you touch those items to the tune of about a million and a half per, you have to do the entire building over. And this is the problem area that we're in. We spent 14 million on two buildings of 200,000. The state numbers on 400,000 square foot of work is in the $200 million range. You can look at Norwood High School, Franklin High School, go down the list. It's terrible. So the question is at this point, what have we looked ahead or advised the voter and the taxpayer of what is ahead of us? We're limited by the CPI thing, that capital improvement thing, to a five-year program. I've spoken with the town manager about putting in the roofs, the heating systems and what have you, on that schedule so at least people can face this as we go ahead, not limited to five years and all of a sudden, oh, we got to do the roof this year, kind of thing. Let us advise the resident of what they are facing, not just the short term, but a longer term, because these things will hit us every 20 years on roofing. I know the Burl School, we've been lucky with the patching we've been able to do there. Bill and I walked over it in the early zeros of this century, and we ended up patching it, but it's still an old roof and needs work. So basically, my initial question is, we're looking at something, no matter how it gets cut, somewhere in the 250, 300 million basis, within 20 years on all of the projects that are facing us. We need more information on this. We need to advise the taxpayer. It's not just 35 million at Burl. We're up in the end of the 300 million range, and we should be aware of it and see what we can do with the state and the inspectors and everyone else to get this straightened out. If we've been at it since 2012, the old building code was if we had talked about it or we had the engineering being done or the architectural work being done, that calendar date doesn't affect that project. It's affecting us, even though it only started in January 1st of this year, and it's a big time thing. Can we get Barrows or the other guy from Walpole to get to the legislature and get some changes done in this on a calendar basis? All this would do is just put this work off for 20 years. But 20 years may allow the legislature and other bodies to change their regulations to give us and the voter a little help in terms of what is going on. The second issue is the enrollment. This is probably more involved than anything else. Bill put together the work that was called for under the SOI, the Statement of Interest and all this stuff. He and I have had some wording on this because I was unable to find out why the differences in numbers were there. After long research in my files, I finally, I think, know what is going on. But the issue is, the state form admits to 2,490 students in '17. The former superintendent at one of the building committee meetings and one of your meetings said we have 26, 26 today in October. But we're off 150 students. After looking at what the numbers are, we have no Metco students. I know what the issue may be there. We have no special needs students, same thing. We have no pre-K students, according to the state. They don't give us any credit for this stuff, but we have these students here and we have to house them. I consider them all students of Foxborough. I did my first year on this committee when Metco broached their questions. They're Foxborough students. They belong here. We keep them and we honor them as well. But the point is, as you look through the numbers, they came back with their response which said Burl has a capacity of 270. I don't know what kind of discussions came around this table, but the pre-K are not included in that 270. So we have another 82 students, 270, 350 odd students in that building. But if we take what they count and compare it to what that progression chart showed, this year we are already oversized by some nine students, and this number is going to change from the 800 odd number this year up to 1,085 by 2025. 1,085 in three schools without an addition to take care of additional students for that school by the district. It is a problem. We're short 270 students. Where are we going to put these kids? We're told we have no space at the middle and high school. We have space, but you know, we can argue that point. When I sat on the Town Hall Working Group, we asked for an audit of school buildings. Schools wouldn't let us in the building, so it never happened. But the point is, if we're 230 students short by 2025, and we haven't started work on Taylor and IGO, where the hell are we going to put them? We have to get that online, discuss it with the residents, with the parents and what have you, as we go through the process. We are short. We're not going to put a third story on IGO as I would see it, and there's no way of putting a second story on Taylor easily. And to put another 15 rooms on Taylor just won't work. We don't have the acreage or anything else up there or down there. Okay. The enrollment is a problem. We need to solve it. We also, in the enrollment, if we can solve it, can save some construction money. Escalation is based on how long a project takes. If we can't move the students out, and I can show you how we can do it, and the numbers and where we can put them, the point is, we could save between 5 and 11 percent that first year of construction by making the construction instead of 26 months to 14 months. Right there, it's a million three and change. The point is, can we do it? Can we grab it? Can we make it work? If we're shorter on working within the Burl, it gives us a little more time to work with Taylor, IGO, and whatever else we need, if it is a new elementary school somewhere. Where? Third issue is what involves the question of where we seem to be heading with this. I have a note in here which may be a little redundant, but it says very clearly, and this was broached to the selectmen, that they need to get the planning board, the downtown committee, the Route 1 Committee, all of these other groups together and figure out where we're putting apartments, the sizes of apartments, and what have you. Since the turn of the century, Bill's office has helped us in terms of determining how many students have been added by the hospital. We know it was at one point in the 140s. It's dropped a little to 120, 125. On the other side, not Fisher Street, the, I keep forgetting the names, I'm in trouble. But the first development at the end of Forbes Boulevard there added 27. Fisher Street, after three weeks, added 24. But that's only after three weeks in October. I haven't had any numbers since October. I haven't pressed for them. But the point is, Fisher Street wasn't completed in terms of construction. They already have kids in the school. How many are we going to get? What are these other apartments going to add? If you look at the newspaper and the reporter, they don't mention children at all. Certain families can certainly move into a one-bedroom apartment with eight kids and survive. It's done in Boston, Chicago, New York, you name it. They can do it. So just saying that we're building one-bedroom apartments or two-bedroom apartments limits the number of kids isn't true. If you look at those new units that were put on Baker Street, the Housing Authority units, they're more than two kids in each apartment coming out of there. This is a big number in terms of individual numbers. So we need to get the town boards together and say, look, we better look at this because if you continue to go wild on apartments, we'll be building schools for the next 40 years. You want to build these schools with these $300 million tickets? Be my guest. I'll be gone. I won't worry about it anymore. My son, who moved in temporarily, will be moving out, so he won't worry about it either. You will, and the people behind me will. So the point is basically this. We have a massive and costly building program ahead of us over the next 20 years. We might be able to stretch it out to 25. Can we get the two elementarys plus this school and the Ahern done in the same 20-year bracket or 10-year bracket? They're big tickets. You know, it's going to be held to pay at town meeting. Everyone's going to be yelling at everything, and the problem is there. So what I'm suggesting is that you absorb this, think about it. I can make myself or some of the ad hoc committee people available to get over this with you. Bill and I talk off and on. We send emails back and forth saying, you're crazy, don't do these things. But we shake hands and we do talk casually and without yelling. Bill's a great guy. He is. You ought to give him one of those plaques that they gave the guy the other night at the selectman's meeting. But anyway, that's the heart of the program that I wanted to present this evening. As I said, I talked with the selectmen and I sent them the same material I sent you. So it should be something that you discuss. Again, we can get together. My only problem is medical. I can't stay out late at night, but I can get some people here if need be. Fortunately, the building committee meets at 3:30, so they can't avoid me. They have to have me. So in any case, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity. I hope you can do something about it. I say can do, not will do, but can do something about it. I think it's important and we need to get at it.
Dick, I want to thank you for coming in, and you always challenge our thinking, so thank you for that. We have a lot of confidence in Mr. Yukna and I think the rest of the leaders in town, and there's probably some things that go on in planning that maybe you don't see in the reporter or online that give us a little more confidence about the plan. But in any event, the main thing I want to say is thank you for being an active member of the community and for coming in, and we will take your information seriously as we always do.
Well, the big problem is just getting information out to the public.
Yes, understood.
You know, if there are 800 kids in the elementary school, there must be at least 400 families involved, plus the graduate families are partial and whatever. So it is an issue that I think should be somehow upfront somewhere, and it's been very quiet for six years. I know Bill is busy. He met in November. He wrote a memo in November. I'd like to see some more.
Okay.
I know he'll do it.
We'll take it under advisement. Thank you very much, Dick.
I thank you.
Thank you, Dick.
Thanks again, Bill.
Have a good night.
I'm going to take the agenda a little out of order just so we can get to the teaching and learning highlight with all the students that are here. We'll do approval of minutes after that. Would you like to kick off the teaching and learning highlight?
I'd like to. So as Mr. Gardner mentioned, it was his idea as far as a teaching and learning highlight to bring our music program forward. We've had many opportunities to highlight them and to share all of the wonderful things that our students have done. Ms. Kami Tidoldi is our department head for the music program from elementary all the way through high school, taking over for Steve Massey, and she has not skipped a beat. And I think that you will see that very clearly with what they're going to be highlighting this evening, from even the most recently, this weekend, and Symphony Hall and everything else that they're going to share with you of what they've accomplished. So I will turn it over to Ms. Tidoldi.
Well, let me introduce you. Well, first of all, thank you so much for having us, but let me introduce to you everyone that's here. We have many members of our music staff, Bobby Glynn, Jennifer Greenleaf, Kirsten Overroyd, Aaron Bush, and Brian Raymond, and all teachers of the middle school and the high school. And we also have students representing each one of the ensembles that participated in both the MICA and the MAJE festivals. And before I get into what those festivals are, I actually want to share with you the actual educational process behind that. I'm going to have them introduce themselves. We have members of our E-boards from each of the ensembles, along with some of our middle school students, so they're going to tell you who they are, what grade they're in, what ensemble they're representing.
Great.
I'm Kelly McCarthy. I am a senior, and I'm one of the co-presidents of the choir.
I'm Dom Amico. I'm actually not on the E-board, but I play trumpet. I'm a senior, and I'm in pretty much every ensemble here.
I'm Emilia Lacy. I'm in seventh grade. I play cello and I'm in the seventh grade orchestra.
I'm George Patenza. I'm in the seventh grade and I'm a tenor in the choir.
I'm Emma Lacy. I'm in seventh grade and I play clarinet.
My name's Nathan Dumont. I'm the band president. I'm a senior and a percussionist.
I'm Caleb Pragg. I'm band vice president. I'm also the drum major of the Martian Band, and I play flute and alto saxophone.
In your year?
I'm a senior.
Senior.
I'm David Kenny. I'm in eighth grade and I play string bass in the orchestra.
My name's Megan Savage. I'm the orchestra president. I'm a senior. I play the viola and I'm in the jazz choir.
I'm Caitlin Kenny. I'm a senior. I play the viola, and I'm in the all orchestras and jazz choir.
I'm Christina. I'm in the high school orchestra. I'm vice president with Caitlin, and I play the string bass.
All right. Great. And I'll let them talk about their experience and all of it, but to share with you, each year we do what we call the MICA Festival and the MAJE Festival. The MICA Festival is actually the Massachusetts Instrumental Choral and Conductors Association, and MAJE stands for the Massachusetts Association for Jazz Education. And they run an adjudicated festival that all of these ensembles that are listed up on the board, we participate in those along with other groups from across the state. And the festival itself, it's an adjudication, it's not a competition, so there isn't like a first, second, third place award. It's actually, our groups are adjudicated based on our rubric, which I'll share with you, which you also have in front of you. Here's our rubric. And they do a really nice job of outlining the important educational processes that we teach, basically from the ground up in our performing ensembles, starting with fifth grade all the way through the 12th grade. And those are highlighted on the left side here. And all of the groups are adjudicated based on how well they do on those components, major components of music performance. And then each group receives a rating from three level sets of judges. So I'm actually going to share with you one adjudication form for the seventh and eighth grade orchestra from one judge. The judges come from across the country, and they are oftentimes college professors, retired directors, many of them are actually still active in the field, so they come from as far as Texas to New York, and they come and adjudicate, so they're very well-known critiques, I guess, in the field and educators. So we, as a department, strive for fours and fives, obviously in every category, for us as a goal. That was something we set as a department a very long time ago and decided in those categories that was the quality that we really wanted to strive for with our students, so we've shared that with them. So this feedback, we actually, all of you have seen this. They've all seen these score sheets, and it's nice because they get to actually see this. And then we can oftentimes draw trends from this, like you would do in other academic areas. So we actually noticed a while ago, back when we were doing district determined measures, that we, in all of our performing ensembles, that we were scoring on the lower end with rhythm, precision, and tempo across all of our ensembles. So we decided to make that a department K through 12 goal for us, and that's where we drew that data from. So it's not just coming from what we feel we need to do, it's actually solid hardcore, data-driven in the field of music. So on top of these score sheets that all of the ensembles get, they also get oral feedback with their performances in the background. So they get audio recordings with the judges actually speaking in real time with their comments, both constructive and complimentary. And we are also able to digitally share those with the students immediately after the performance is done. So this is really a full circle process for us that we start. And then the MAJE component, so the jazz side, looks just like this, but using some jazz lingo, which is also on your forum. So that is the educational process for you. And then, if you receive an average rating of a five, you then fall in the category of the gold medal category, which our seventh and eighth grade concert band, the FHS Symphony Orchestra, and FHS Concert Band received, and the other performing ensembles received silver medals. Again, these are excellent ratings. We're really, really proud of those ratings and the results, and along with our jazz ensembles, both received gold ratings at the MAJE Festival. So with that, if you get a gold medal, you are then put into a lottery, which then can afford you the opportunity to perform at Symphony Hall, which these students got to do on Saturday. So here's a couple of pictures of us there. So there's the seventh and eighth grade band. This is the Symphony Orchestra. And there's a shot of the concert band. So I'm going to let the students talk now and share their experience and let you know how, what it was like for them to be onstage at Symphony Hall, or, you know, anything about, you know, participating in these festivals that you would like to share with us. You want to start?
Yeah, I'll start.
All right.
So this was my eighth year doing MICA. We started in fifth grade, and it's one of the most incredible things. I really love seeing the other schools perform and seeing what other towns are doing with their music programs and hearing them and comparing it to what we do, see what they do different. And it's just, especially once we get to Symphony Hall, it's one of the most incredible experiences. I don't know if you've ever been to that space, but that space is absolutely beautiful. Everything, everything sounds amazing in there. So for us to be, for us to have the opportunity to perform there three, four times now is absolutely incredible.
So I know, as Nate was saying, like, the entire space of Symphony Hall, just in general, it's like jaw dropping. I know Caitlin and I are stand partners, and when we were playing there on Saturday, one of the pieces that we're playing is like a slow, it's more of like a resonant, it's called dusk. So it's a lot of like quick releases where you're going to listen to the like sound of our orchestra ring in the background for like a solid 10 seconds, and we just like look at each other at one point and just sat there smiling. I know here at Foxborough, like, we establish a culture of excellence, so it really pays off when we're able to go to these fantastic spaces. Yeah, it's a really like, it's a very life-changing experience to play at Symphony Hall. I know for some of us, it's our fourth year playing there, and it's just incredible to even like be able to say that we're only 18 years old, but we've played at Symphony Hall four times.
I'd call that a teaching and learning highlight.
George, did you have something prepared?
Um, yeah, so, um, the songs that we performed at MICA were like very emotional. Like, while we were rehearsing, I learned about vowel shape, diction, and exercising my diaphragm. I enjoyed singing all three songs, Dominique Feeley and Sing Hallelujah, but most of all, I love singing the song called You Are Not I loved singing the song called You Are Not Alone. The piece was, I think that, that piece impressed the audience the most. Yeah. It was an honor to have represented Foxborough at MICA because, because I was very proud and thankful to stand alongside my fellow musicians who share the same passions as I do, and the Foxborough Music Program gave me that, and it was really amazing, so.
So you plan on, on playing there again, at least four times?
Yes.
Very good.
So this was my second year performing at MICA. I performed last year when I was in sixth grade. And relating to what George said, the band as well prepared three pieces, and we got these pieces like mid-January to perform at the end of March. And just seeing how the pieces came from like sight-reading it, playing all the wrong notes, all the wrong rhythms, our being teacher saying, okay, just let this run through it, just do your best. And then coming to like more the end of February, where the pieces came together, and you could tell this is what the composer wanted it to sound like, and you could just tell that all the hard work we put into it really paid off. And relating to what they said, the seventh grade and eighth grade band got to perform at Symphony Hall. This was my first time performing at Symphony Hall, and I have to say it was the best concert I had ever performed at. It was amazing to just be a seventh grader and to be on that stage, and just to be representing Foxborough, and it was just an amazing experience that I know I'm going to remember.
Well said.
There aren't many opportunities that people our age have to explore areas that their heroes have. So in this case, some of our musical heroes, some of the people that we aspire to play like, or sound like, or even act like, they play there on a regular basis. So to be in a situation where suddenly your band or your orchestra is there, and you can listen to the recording and even the performance of what you're doing, and then say, hey, this is kind of like the performance of the BSO, or whoever you see at that hall. It's just really surreal. You really can't verbalize just how special it is.
Except in this case, instead of your hero's sounds you're hearing, Megan and Caitlin are hearing their sounds coming out. You're hearing your sounds coming out.
Also at, at MICA, when the choir was performing, at the end of one of our pieces, You Are Not Alone, I felt like, like amazing that, from, like, like she said, at day, at day one, we were like terrible. We were like, we were just like, um, what noticed that? But, but our choir, my choir teacher, Ms. Overroyd, helped us, like, she gave us confidence, and she pushed us to do our very, very best. I remember this one section we did over and over and over again, and we finally got it, and it was amazing.
So George, that's probably a good segue chance for me to just compliment the staff here. As Dr. Burdo said, we had a change with Mr. Massey retiring, but I think what impresses me so much about the music program here, and having a couple of sons in the music program, is the sustained excellence that this program has. And somebody used the word passion, it might have been you, George, maybe it was a few of you. Between the sustained excellence, which comes from passion, I think, of both the faculty as well as you guys, I mean, we know, you all know, how hard you work to produce this. It doesn't just happen to get from that day one of not really knowing the notes to ending up onstage at Symphony Hall. It doesn't just happen, does it? So I, I really commend the music program, both faculty and students. One other comment I just wanted to make is, I love seeing the uniforms on each end. Because, you know, it takes a lot of work, but you can do music, and Kayla doesn't have hers on and others', but I, I know we have a lot of athletes up there who juggle it all and experience it all, and to me, that's, that's one of the really special things about Foxborough High School. So I don't know if other committee members wanted to make any comments?
I have one. May I?
Please.
So I was going through, this is particularly for the senior band members, but I found your fifth grade MICA picture. I kind of wish I brought it with me today, and That would have been perfect. I was struck by a lot of different things. One, you guys have grown so much physically, so grown. And secondly, you have grown so much as musicians. I, I have sat through all of your bandaramas since fifth grade, and the last one a couple weeks ago. And I, I'm not a musician, but I can, I'm just so in awe of what you all have done and your commitment. You look at that fifth grade band picture, and we have so many students who really, you know, try in fifth grade, and our fifth grade band is, is quite large. Ms. Tidoldi, how big is our fifth grade? A hundred and twenty? So a hundred and twenty, and I think, so how many of the hundred and twenty, say, who were in your fifth grade band, when you started as freshmen, were playing in the marching band? About, maybe twenty-four, twenty, twenty-four? And, and how many are still with it today? So I know there were about forty trumpets in the fifth grade band. You and Jack started as freshmen, there were two. So I think that says, and it's the same with choir and, and with orchestra, the amount of dedication to carry through from when you start as fifth graders to when you guys graduate as seniors. It requires so much work, dedication, and the passion that George talked about, and some of you all talked about. It's just amazing. I'm going to stop before I start crying. Thank you for coming and, and, I missed your performance on Saturday. We were sad that we missed it, but I know it was phenomenal. I saw it on Facebook.
There's a few, there's a few video, nice videos that your parents took, and they're on YouTube. An FCA has them, which is great. And I also like to piggyback on what Mr. Gardner said, the dedication, the, the music staff to make all of these opportunities happen for our students before school and after-school rehearsals, and the students join us for those things. So it's certainly hard work put in and, and certainly earned, but I think you guys are hearing that it's certainly worth it, so we're happy about that.
And in addition to all of the passion and the creativity and the work that all of you put in for our students and all of the hours, on top of that, you also are the organizers for many of these things. By having MICA here at the high school and organizing that, the school committee has a letter within their packets that really show Nice, thank you. the organization and how well everything ran by hosting here, and the model that you are as musicians, musicians yourself, as well as the educators. In addition, receiving emails from the band director over at King Philip High School, and talking about the organization for Just Symphony Hall with Mr. Bush and Mr. Glynn, and the work that you've done, and how well you do it. So it's, you're constantly going on and beyond just what you do for our kids every single day, and then their achievements, which are outstanding.
With kids like this, it's pretty easy to do.
They wouldn't do it if they didn't have good leaders. And while I've taken the floor for a minute, I would like to commend all of you for not missing a beat, but I celebrate all the new beats you're adding, and I now follow you on Facebook, and all those beats on YouTube, so.
Thank you.
Keep going.
Thank you so much. And I'll just share with you just a couple more things that we have coming up, but actually, this afternoon, we all just heard approximately a hundred and ten musicians from grades five through eleven give solo auditions for FMA, Foxborough Music Association-sponsored scholarships, which was huge for these students to be performing by themselves for a panel of judges, and the Foxborough Music Association awards scholarships to these students, which allows them to go to summer camps or take private lessons, so.
I'm glad, I'm, I'm glad I don't have to choose.
It's really hard, and they did a great job. And then Wednesday, our, our chamber groups depart for Washington DC, where we will actually participate in a similar format to MICA, but it's actually a national festival, similar rubrics, we go through the same adjudicated process, along with getting clinicians and feedbacks, and we'll get the same kind of thing that you see here. We'll have that while we're on tour as well. And, and lastly, just, I'll probably be revisiting this with you in the future, but if you remember back in December, we hosted this, music students from the Hale School, we would like, they've invited us to come and visit them. So we are working on building a, an outline for an itinerary to potentially go and do an exchange with the Hale School in Australia, and I'd like to come back to you with more information on that for hopefully next summer.
Do you need an extra shotgun?
I'll let you know. But I look forward to sharing that with you and more information.
I think I'll make, I can make myself available.
Kami, you mentioned, we've talked about the faculty and the students, you just brought up FMA. Do you want to just spend a minute on the role the FMA plays in your success?
Oh my gosh, so the FMA is, we couldn't do what we do without the Foxborough Music Association in there. The, the parent organization that supports the educational endeavors of the music students in Foxborough, and they work tirelessly as volunteers to make sure that these students get these really, these extra experiences, including supporting student scholarships. I would say that we're one of the most highly-commissioned towns, meaning the Foxborough Music Association is actually sponsoring new music and new pieces of art to put into the world. I think we've done over twenty, it might be more than that, twenty commissions, which we're premiering another one in honor of Steve Massey's work here in May.
May 24th.
May 24th. And Dan Buckvich will be in residence that entire week, who is the composer of the piece. Dan Buckvich is regarded as one of the premier wind, actually just composers in general, right now, living composers, so he'll be spending time with us. They fund guest artists, so our fall jazz guest artists, and we have a jazz artist coming in the spring. And all of our students, this, these experiences that these parents work tirelessly, tirelessly for, make their experience here so unique and so special. So thank you to the Foxborough Music Association. They really do a lot for us, so.
Well, we'll let you guys go. I know it's late. Thank you for staying. You really do set the bar for what a teaching and learning highlight's all about at Foxborough Schools, so thank you, everybody, staff included. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
George, you need to speak up a little bit more. Don't be so bashful next time. All right, we're going to jump back to minutes, if that's okay. We've got the regular meeting minutes from April 2nd. Anybody have any comments?
I do not have any changes.
I didn't either. Anybody else? Now, you want to make a motion?
I'd make a motion to accept the minutes of meeting for our regular school committee for April 2nd, 2018.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Marilyn. Thank you, Tina. All those in favor? Four zero. I should mention that Mr. Connolly could not be with us tonight. He did let me know that ahead of time. So four zero. Thank you. Okay. FHS Student Activity Account. Is that right?
Yes. So Irene Tepes is not able to be with us, and Diana had a last-minute scheduled change and wasn't able to be here with us. But this is, the Spanish National Honor Society, any fundraising that any of the organizations do, as you know, they need a place to be able to put that, and we have not had that for, we have the National Honor Society, but we don't have one for the Spanish National Honor Society. So we needed to have a line in the Student Activity Account to be able, for any funds that were raised, to be able to put that money. So I don't know, Bill, if you want to add to that?
And as you know, basically, student activity accounts can only exist with your vote of approval. So the list that we have, you've, we've reviewed some in the past, we've added some, depending on the activities that are going on. Obviously, just because you add it doesn't mean it has to exist, you know, forever. It, it means it exists while there's a need for it. So it is up to you to decide whether or not you'll do that. Obviously, if you don't, then they can't continue on with the fundraising and the activities they want to do.
Anybody like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to make a line item for Foxborough High School Student Activity Account for the Spanish National Honor Society.
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion?
I just have a question before we vote, sorry.
That's why we have a discussion.
Well, is there any utility in, when we start a new organization like the Spanish, I know we have, we have an Art National Honor Society now, is there any utility in, in just setting up student activity accounts at the outset, in doing, not like a blanket, but it, once we have several new organizations, should we just set them up?
I don't think so, because not all the organizations actually end up needing it. So you would set up a lot just for the sake of setting them up, and then you'd have to get rid of them down the road.
So it's better to do it on an ad hoc basis?
I would say so.
Okay, that's right. That answers my question.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Four zero. Thank you. Digital report cards, middle school and high school.
Okay, so this is something that Allison and I wanted to bring, just for discussion purposes, as we've continued to speak about technology and how we're using technology for efficiency and easy access for everyone. One of the areas that we've not moved forward, as many school districts have, especially at the secondary level, is online report cards and not sending them home in paper copy, unless, of course, there was a request by a parent, and they wanted to have it in paper copy. So this is something that we would like to move to next year and plan on moving to next year, at the middle school and high school level only, not at the elementary, for a number of different reasons. And we see that parents are ready, go on to Power School and check grades, they, they have access that's there, and honestly, by the time the report cards go home, they've already looked at it online. Safe to say?
Yes, and this was actually brought forward by one of the middle school teachers. There were some good points made about efficiency. Students have to return to homeroom to pick up their paper copies, and there are instructional minutes that are lost, there's efficiencies with paper. There were just some really practical, just issues that they brought up that I hadn't really thought about. So we brought it to the admin team, and now we're sharing it with you, just to see what everyone's perspectives were. But they seem, like everyone thinks it's a no-brainer because they're already looking at those.
And I know for my own children at the high school, middle school level, I've not ever had paper copies come home. We'd log on and look at, we get reminders, so I think that was one of the things when we were talking about at the admin meetings, it's really important that we send out the notices at, at the time when progress reports or report cards are coming out to let parents know. This is when they're available, so that way it's that reminder to go on and to look. Because if, sometimes if you don't have it in hard copy, you might not have it at the forefront of your mind. So we want to make sure that we're communicating where and how to access.
I don't see a negative of that.
No, and of course, a paper copy's available at the request of any parent.
Absolutely.
I do just have one question. At, at the middle school level, I know we used to, I don't even know if we do anymore, but sign the envelopes and send them back. I'm assuming there's some, I mean, aside from recycling the envelopes, but there's some value in knowing that a parent at that level has, has seen it and signed, signed off, acknowledged that they've seen the child's grades. I know in high school, we don't do that, and I don't see any reason to do it, but i- is there a purpose for the signature, the parent's signature?
The parents see it.
Other than that, I don't know who's best to answer that question. I'm looking at Sue Abrams, but
She can answer it in middle school, sure.
Allison, they've got a whole plethora of people here.
To be very honest with you, I think more people are using Power School and perhaps find the envelope an annoyance to, to send it back. So I don't see any pressing need to have it. In the fifth and sixth grade, where the, it's a two-person team, there's a lot of very close communication anyway, so that none of it's a surprise. If a student doesn't have a good grade on a test, the paper goes home to get signed so that the parents are aware. So I, I think we're, we're trying to expand the communication to all parents, as well as to the parents of the students who are learning how to be independent learners, so.
So that's something we could phase out pretty easily.
So you wouldn't need confirmation that a parent has actually seen it? There's no way of plugging that in?
Confirmation that the parents have seen it in Power School? I don't know how Power School works.
That's what I'm saying.
No way.
No way.
That wouldn't be a part of it. But I think that one of the things that our teachers do really well is the communication with parents on both ends of the spectrum, if you will, really celebrating someone's progress and, and hard work, and how if they've really overcome some obstacles maybe they've had academically, and then on the other end too, if they're really concerned or worried in reaching out, and having that, that constant dialogue is so important, so that when report cards do come around, it shouldn't be a surprise.
It's almost like the signature on the envelope is kind of a relic.
And I think Yeah, but that, that used to be. In years, in days gone by, that was the only guarantee that the, the parent had actually seen the report card. It was vital information.
And I can say, in my role as the K through eight math science curriculum director, I would get a lot of emails and phone calls that let me know that parents were looking at Power School pretty regularly. So, from, from that experience, I would say it probably is antiquated, because they have that, some people get alerts on their phone as soon as a grade comes in, so.
I had to shut those alerts off.
Yes.
It was a little bit too much, for all of us.
Yes.
Any other comments? So it sounds like the administration has our consensus to move forward.
Yes.
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Thanks for giving us that update. Okay, we are on to the riveting part of the agenda, the second reading of policies.
Chris isn't here.
The policy is fine, but with his radio voice.
I know.
Well, we can waive the second readings, of course.
We can waive that, we take a recommendation.
Janet, I know you had some follow-up, which you gave us a note in our packet, and Bevy, you are on our policy subcommittee without your colleague here tonight, right? So I don't know if you and Janet want to tag-team a little with Amy's help on updates on these? Are you comfortable doing that, Bevy?
Sure.
So the first one is Policy AC regarding nondiscrimination. Does anyone want to motion to waive the reading before we get into the discussion?
I'd like to.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Bill.
Besides Bill wanting to do it?
I would like to motion to move the reading, please.
Waive the reading?
Please.
Okay. Is there a second to waive the reading?
I'll second that.
Okay.
So that's a.
Aye, aye, aye.
File AC.
Aye, aye, aye. All in favor? Yes, thank you.
We've read this.
So Bevy, just remind us what we're doing on this policy.
Well, what we are doing on all five policies, but, and this one, we have to add five words, pregnancy or pregnancy-related conditions. And the difference between what is, Janet did a lot of work for us, is what the actual mask says. Now, there is no reason why we have to mimic everything that is in a mask policy. That is basically a guideline for what each individual town or district wants to do. So we may use the wording that we feel is totally acceptable and applicable to our Foxborough district. So we do not have to mimic every word. In some places, you're going to see the word creed, in other places, you're going to see the word religion. If they mean the same thing, you might come up with, in one part of, one that might use both. So we don't have to mimic verbatim everything they say. If we find that this policy reflects what we want it to be for Foxborough.
Yeah, so just to say it a different way, if I may, or summarize, the, the question we had that came up last meeting, when the first reading occurred for each of these, was that, as you point out, there were different terminology, different words used in each of these five. They were related, but, but not quite consistent. And I know, Janet, we had said, could you talk to mask? And I guess mask hasn't been real responsive so far, is that right? Or could you maybe summarize?
We did hear, I think Amy can fill you in on that.
We did. Sure. And so what we found is that where we do see some of the wording, the order changed within, or a little bit of differences, it's because it connects back to specific laws for those policies.
So it's intentional?
So, it is intentional. And the other piece, as far as with religion versus creed, it's really, the creed part is, is unimportant, but at the same time, our attorneys have said, just to keep it there, anytime religion is mentioned, just for the consistency piece. So what we're really looking at is, we had a couple of, out of these five, where gender had not been inserted when the last time we had gone through, we needed to make that addition, add, as Bevy had stated, those five words, the pregnancy or pregnancy-related conditions. And with that, our policies match with MASAC.
And with all of the laws on our policy.
Correct.
So Amy, you're comfortable that these are in fine shape, then, for us to approve?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so these are pretty, just for the public, to help with all the mumbo jumbo, these are really just pretty minor changes we're making to be a little bit more inclusive, but we're not making dramatic policy change to any of these five.
No.
No.
Just being in line with what the law has, how it has changed as of April 1st for this piece.
Okay. Well, I think it's good we took a little extra time just to understand that.
Yeah.
Anything else, Bevy, you want to add on this? Do you feel it's ready for approval?
No, I'm ready to, yeah. Somebody would like to recommend that we adopt this one? We should adopt each one separately.
Right.
I'll move that we approve the revisions to File AC, nondiscrimination.
I second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous? Thank you. So the next one is.
Did we waive the reading blanket for all of them?
Yes, I did. Yes, I did.
Do we have to do it per?
Do we have to do it that way? Do we have to do it individually?
No, we, we don't, we can do it either way. Do you want to amend your earlier motion to make sure that's clear?
Sure.
Janet, did you capture it for one motion or for all of them?
I have it for the one.
For all of them. So why don't you just make it again now, Marilyn, for the remaining four?
Okay, I move to make motion to accept all of our new policies.
Waive the reading.
To waive the reading of all the.
The next four policies.
The next four policies.
The next four policies. Do you want me to read the file numbers?
Sure.
Okay, File AC, File GBA, File GCF, and File JB.
Yeah, and actually, we did AC in your first motion.
Oh, there's one more.
This one's JFBB as well.
Yeah, File JFBB, yeah.
You okay with that, Janet?
Yep.
Okay.
Anyone want to second that?
I will second.
All those in favor? Four zero. Okay, thank you. So now we're on to affirmative action for recruitment of staff, File GBA. Bevy, same thing, right?
Right.
Anything different to take up on this one? Anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve File GBA affirmative action for recruitment of staff as presented.
I second that.
All those in favor? Four zero, thank you. Next one is the File GCF Licensed Employee Hiring Policy.
I move to accept the File GCF Licensed Employee Hiring as changed on our new policies.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor? Four zero, thank you. Second to last, File JB regarding equal educational opportunities. Again, just adding these few words regarding pregnancy or pregnancy-related conditions.
I'll make a motion that we approve File JB equal education opportu, equal educational opportunities as presented.
Oh, I second, I'm sorry. I was reading the next one, wondering why you were saying it's the final one. Don't we have one more?
Yeah, we have one more.
Getting a little nervous, neighbors.
Oh, yeah, wait, we need to do the vote.
I second.
All those in favor? Four zero. And the last one, File JFBB on school choice.
I move to accept policy JF, the changes on policy JFBB, school choice, as, as written.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor? Four zero. Bevy, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Janet, thank you for talking MASAC.
Yes, I want to.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you for looking at it, of course, as always.
Thank you, Janet, for the extra work you did for us on this.
Absolutely. I, I know it seems really picky to go through all the language and make sure all the verbiage is correct, but sometimes the devil's in the details, and you don't want to accidentally drop out a really important term from one policy and then have it come back, you know. Better to be safe than sorry. So thank you for following that.
And I think that was really a good exercise, because when we looked at something like disabled or handicapped, is that still the terminology that we need? And yes, it is there for a reason, because it is connecting to a particular law.
Statute, yeah. Thank you.
And with our committee's usual efficiency, we are now 10 minutes ahead of schedule. Nice work. So Bill, you're going to give us an update on the FY18 budget, please.
Sure. Only two real adjustments. One's in the special needs area. We had a teacher go on maternity leave under a salary line. We could not find a qualified individual to fill the role that we were looking to hire as a replacement. So what we did do was go out and hire a contractor that had the appropriate skills. The contractor did cost us more money. What we'll save in the teacher's salary is about $20,000 during the period, but we're going to spend about $35,000. So that's why you've got a slight, you know, decrease in what our available funds will be for the end of this period. But again, it, you know, was the best way to, to fill the gap during maternity.
It's just during the maternity leave for special needs?
It's a special needs class that we're, we're servicing.
At the high school?
No, actually at the elementary.
Okay.
The second one is in the plant operation side. We're rotating $65,000 from the utility side of it and moving it up into the building services side. Basically, the electric is coming in significantly under this year because of the solar farm being in place. And fortunately for us, that's happening because we are running into some higher costs on the building side with work that we've been doing on a couple of the buildings, the tailor is one of them, to basically deal with issues and make sure that we keep it up to, you know, good operational skills. So, we are just going from one plant operation line, a, the utility line, up into a services line to cover that shortfall. The other thing I will note is that our gas costs have gone up significantly. Fortunately, they're right on budget right now. We had a great year last year, because gas costs overall were down, but they seem to be creeping back up. And we did meet, I met with the town side and asked if we go out to bid on this, because it's something we hadn't been out to bid on recently, so that we can make sure we have a stable number for next year, because we're a little concerned about it. Let it just float, could, could end up costing us a lot of money. So, they've agreed to doing that, and that will happen during the summertime. Other than that, everything else is status quo.
So $3,000 to the good as of today's estimate?
Correct.
Any questions or comments for Bill?
Many, thank yous.
As always, a thorough job.
Can we just get a motion to approve the budget summary statement?
I'll make a motion to approve the budget summary as presented by Mr. Yuthen.
I will second that.
All those in favor? Four zero. Thank you.
Time to get to make a motion.
Bill, just.
Sorry, Beth.
I didn't feel like to blow it on the.
Do you want to provide any updates regarding preparation for town meeting, some of the meetings you've been working on behind the scenes? I know it's not formally called out on our agenda, but.
The, the building committee, obviously, will have a couple articles through the school committee. One is the, the use of $85,000, as we discussed at the last meeting, to buy the sewer rights for the borough project. That's kind of a critical move, I think, whether we were to do the borough project or not. It gives us the ability to take that off of the septic system, which could be a problem down the road. Beyond that, we're going to have a meeting on Tuesday, actually tomorrow afternoon, which is kind of a critical one. The architects will be coming in with a few options that are available for what the exterior look will be, and some of the interior changes that have been proposed. And we need to make, as a group, make our decisions to keep, keep them moving along. Obviously, at town meeting, we won't be voting on any funding for the borough project. It won't actually, we'll be sending it into the MSBA on July 11th for a August, end of August, meeting with the MSBA for their, hopefully their approval. After that point, assuming everything is approved and the budgets look to be, you know, the cost estimates look to be where we, you know, expect them to be, we could then ask for a special town meeting early in the fall, again, to push our schedule up, because the, the hope really is, and I, I think I've got the architects and the OPM in, in line with, if we can move it into like a September, October town meeting vote, we could potentially get into the ground in the fall of 2019 with our foundations for the addition, which would be critical to kind of speeding up the process. Obviously, those foundations don't affect the current inside of the building, so those could continue to operate while we are building the addition areas. And I think that would be, you know, behoove us a lot as far as the cost. One of the factors that we have discussed, as far as, you know, what we're going to do with the, the children during the construction, is the fact that we, if we can build these two additions, we can effectively create six classrooms within the building structure, and that gives us the ability to move children out of an area, renovate it, and then keep moving from there. So, the committee has done a lot of thoughtful thinking about how to run through this process. You know, the, I think at this point, we're really on track with where we expected to be. It is a longer process through the MSBA. And as, you know, Dick's comment was about this being six years in, we've only been, you know, the last two and a half years since the MSBA has actually approved us to be in the process. So, you know, I don't think there's a taxpayer that we have that would look for us not to participate with the MSBA at them currently paying about 50% of our cost. So, I think we're doing the prudent thing for the taxpayers in, in moving the way we are. That's about it, but, you know, those that, the, like I said, this makes town meeting, the only vote really there will be for the sewer capacity that we need, which is critical. The other thing that has come up is, obviously, so far, the, not so far, it's actually been approved, the selectmen did approve the track and, and stands to stay on the warrant as a separate article, Article 6. And they voted three, four, and two against to support it at town meeting. So, at this point, the advisory committee has supported it, and the selectmen have supported it, at least with a majority. So now it will be up to the taxpayers to make the decision as to whether that project moves forward this summer.
That's great news, and a lot of hard work on your part, and time, and Amy's part. So, I want to thank AdCom and the Board of Selectmen for their support in letting us take that to warrant. And now, as you said, the taxpayers will make the decision. But the idea of having the turf field campus complete and have this be a complete campus, Debbie Spinelli's vision, a lot of people's vision to get that done, that's a step, a big step closer, so, thank you.
I also want to thank Tina. I mean, she's spearheading a, kind of a fundraiser thing, which I think can go a long way in, in making the final product look that much better. I think we've done some nice things with the San Berns Memorial. But, you know, you're going to have a, a new entranceway to a new grander type stadium stand, assuming that the taxpayers do it. You know, if we are able to do something that actually makes that entranceway really something special, I think that would be nice as well. And it'll give, you know, people in town an opportunity to support that, you know, through a, like a brick purchase scenario with family names or student names or whatever. So, good opportunity, I think, for taxpayers and, and, you know, graduates and soon-to-be graduates to get their name as part of history, so.
Or just even community members.
Mm-hmm. More to come on that. Marilyn said she'd help me. And actually, my friend Kelly Blair, who's in the audience tonight, is, is also going to help me. So I already have a team.
Yay.
But you'll be seeing more to come in the next couple weeks on the engraved brick fundraiser.
Oh, great.
Thank you, Tina.
No problem. My pleasure.
Okay. Thanks, Bill. Acceptance of donation, Partners in Patriotism Fund.[1638.51]
So, our wonderful students are down in Atlanta right now.
They're here, I knew they were here this weekend.
Yes, they are there right now for the International DECA competition. So, I'm watching the tweets because I know John McCabe will be very active in tweeting out how things are going. I've been watching that today. But the Partners in Patriotism Fund did five thousand, five hundred dollars to support them in going down for that competition that they qualified for as a result of the regional and state competition. So, very appreciative of their support and their partnership to really support our students.
Well, I would like to make a motion to accept with gratitude the five thousand, five hundred dollars donated by the Partners in Patriotism Fund for the DECA student trip in Atlanta.
I will second that.
And I'd like to say they've been doing that consistently since they began DECA.
I know.
It's unbelievable. They've been sending the kids. So, and Partners in Patriotism has been supporting...
Well, it's totally unexpected and gratefully accepted.
Absolutely.
I mean, consistently since this began.
Yes.
Well, and I've talked to a couple of parents who've just said it wouldn't be possible for their child to go if it weren't for this grant. Because the way it comes up, you don't, you find out you're going just a few weeks before you go. And there isn't time to fundraise. It's a very, you know, it's, they're very busy kids and they don't have a parent booster group like the FMA, like the basketball team and so...
And the soccer and...
Exactly. So, this is very, very much appreciated by, by the students and the parents. And I think they're gonna do great.
Yeah, it's very exciting.
They really do.
Any further discussion? So, we have a motion to accept in a second? All those in favor? Four zero. We have a member of the Partners in Patriotism in the front row. Thank you for your support.
My pleasure.
Okay. Second to last, recognition of public service.
So, this agenda item is for you.
Not necessary.
Yes. It's very necessary because nine years on the school committee, many years as chair, and the support and time that you've given to this community and all students. I, I had to write down a couple of notes because so many things come to mind when I think about all that you've given. So, the first thing I did, I thought volunteer, because this is a volunteer position. So, how does Webster define that? A person who undertakes or expresses a willingness to undertake a service. But I actually liked Wikipedia's definition better.
Oh, read, read.
Generally considered an altruistic activity where an individual provides services for no financial or social gain to benefit another person, group, or organization. There's a host of reasons that people volunteer, to be able to share their talents, to be able to give back to the community, to bring value to the organization, to make a difference for others, just to help people around you simply, and to really help others provide a voice. And you have done that through the school committee for the last nine years, as well as many other things that you have done within this community and for the school and for our students, most importantly. When we think about you personally and the background that you've brought, I think that's what's so wonderful about a group of committee members because of all the varying perspectives that you bring. Your business background, educational technology, talking about challenging our thinking and asking questions, you have definitely done that. I know personally you have done that for me. I have enjoyed very much our conversations within the educational technology world because that is a passion for mine and engaging students in a way that I didn't even think about, based on the questions that you've asked and the forward thinking that you've had. And that's made a benefit, a benefit to our students here and the district as a whole. Your genuine interest in moving our schools forward, it's your interest for all students, for all of our staff, for all of our teachers, and really wanting the best for what we have here in Foxborough. And it is a special place. And I think that Elizabeth Andrew, and what she said was volunteers do not necessarily have the time, they just have the heart. And you have a big heart. I can think of being at a Foxborough football game and I look up on the staging and who's on the staging and doing the video camera of the football game. It's you. I first thought, oh, please don't let him fall off. We need him. I've been in a baseball game and I hear your voice in working with baseball and scores and keeping and all of that. Coaching soccer, you're everywhere. I don't know here where we don't have the time, but you seem to find it. I thank Michelle and Brian and Brady for you giving up time with him for us because that is also a big sacrifice for all of those nights here. I started thinking about those nights here. So, if you think nine years, you'll appreciate this one.
I just got excited, yeah. I think there's math. The math is coming.
If you think about nine years, ten months as far as school, two meetings a month, then we have a meeting in the summer in July and we have a meeting in August, well, that alone is a hundred and ninety-eight meetings, just school committee meetings. I'm sorry, Michelle. That's a lot of nights out. And then you add other meetings on top of that, whether it's FinCom or AdCom or town meeting or all of the other things that you represent as far as the school committee.
And subcommittees.
And subcommittees as well. The number grows exponentially. So, it is a great amount of your time. When I think about, why would somebody want to give all that time? And I think it goes, it goes back to the heart. And it is what you bring to the committee and what you bring to this community, and it is for all. It's, it's not just for your own interest, it's for all interest. And if you look at effective school committees, they do make a significant impact on student achievement. And I think that we see that here in Foxborough with our school committee and all of the perspectives that we bring to this table. And you have a talent for many long reports and being able to synthesize that information with a lot of data points and bringing it to the person that may be watching at home or that may be sitting here and making it to where it's understandable in a way that they can wrap their head around it if they're not in education. And you always think about the viewer at home and being able so they understand what we're talking about. You really have a gift for bringing that to this committee. I couldn't help but think too, school committees in general, at a little interesting historical piece, that if we go back to the Mass Bay Colony, they passed a law in sixteen forty-seven that required towns to establish and maintain schools. And that early on, these schools were administered by citizens through their town meetings and they became more, as schools became more complex, then they really needed to have elected representation. And the selectman piece, but later more to committees. And the townspeople who then hired the schoolmaster, as this, we know the superintendent now, and then provided the schoolhouses way back then. But what I thought was interesting is you're attending to all school-related matters, that the establishment of school committees is really a Massachusetts piece historically. That if you look at like the National School Board Association across the country, it started in Massachusetts, not surprising. We're number one in the country. We have the highest standards and the highest, you know, expectations for our students based on our standards. But in eighteen twenty-six, Massachusetts formally established this system for school committees and that work and the importance of their work. And it can't be emphasized enough that the work that you do makes a difference. And your nine years and those two hundred-plus meetings, aside from all of the listening within the community and hearing those voices and bringing those to the table, whether they are concerns, our questions, you've done that. And you've done that in a very professional way that I know that we're all very proud to have you as a member. I'm personally very sad to see that you are not rerunning. I understand that there are many reasons to be able to give that time and it goes back to so much time. So, I'm happy that you'll get some of your Monday nights back.
Thank you.
But I also do hope to still see you very active in the community. And I, I know that you will be because you're advocates for our students and for public education, and you've just done that so remarkably well for all of our students and our staff. And we're really fortunate for the time that you've given. And be sad to not see you at the table. But I just, I, I know others will want to speak, but I want to thank you personally for even the mentorship, when I came on as assistant superintendent and all of our conversations and how you've pushed my thinking forward and asked questions that I needed to think about a little bit more and come back to. You've helped me stretch and grow, and I think that that really speaks highly when you can do that. And I know it's not just me, it's, it's all of us at the table. And again, for all of the right reasons. So, I thank you. I thank Michelle and Brian and Brady for giving him time to be with us because it makes a difference and it's very much appreciated.
Thank you. That's, that's a lot.
Yeah, that's true.
But I appreciate you putting your thoughts down. And the only reason I'm comfortable leaving with a new superintendent is because I know you and what a great job you'll do, and I know this committee and what a great job they'll do. So, it's a little bittersweet, you know? If nothing else, it's a, a stage of life that, you know, you move beyond. And I'm very happy to have had this opportunity. I've got great friends who have supported me, which I really appreciate. And we've got a great staff here, so, you know, you hire the right people and you get out of their way and you support them. So, apologies.
I love it.
No apologies needed.
No apologies needed.
It's been a lot of fun. I've really enjoyed working with everybody, and that's what I'm gonna miss the most. I've had the pleasure to work with three super...
Don't they, don't they, we're letting you off the hook totally, you know?
For your day and we'll put a lot of things for you too.
There's lots of things to sign up for.
And I do want to thank my family because they put up with me doing this a lot. And, you know, it's not always easy, as Tina's kids probably know, that to have mom or dad sitting up there.
Embarrassed.
And you've gotta be the kid whose, whose parent is the one who's visible. But, you know, I just got to the point where I felt, and I think we talked about this when I was preparing to leave, I just felt like maybe it was time for a fresh voice. So, you know, I'm proud of all that we've accomplished, we've accomplished. And I appreciate the support of the committee in giving me the opportunity to, to be the voice a lot of the time. And I think we've come up with some innovative things in the nine years that'll help the district. And I encourage younger parents to get involved. I mean, this has been so rewarding. I think I said at Debbie's retirement and I've said to Amy, one of the things I enjoy the most is the side meetings with you guys, where we strategize, where we think about what it is we want to do next and how we go grade to grader. And I know you'll do, both of you will continue that with everyone else's help. Anyway, thank, thank you. It's very kind. Unnecessary, but very kind.
And I take credit for pressuring him into running the first time. I didn't let him off the hook until he said yes.
Good job.
Right? Is that true?
That is true.
Is that true, Michelle? That is true. So, it's all my fault.
So, we should all thank you.
Yeah. I will take ownership for that.
Yes. I would echo the sentiments that Amy had. I'll go last. I said when I came tonight that you have always challenged me and pushed me, but at the same time, you've always really supported me. And your approval and acceptance always meant a lot to me as I was growing up in the district. I've been here for a long time. When I came here, my kids were in second grade and I've graduated from high school and our kids were on similar trajectories. So, I've always appreciated the fact that you've been so supportive of all the work that I've tried to do in the district and then had great suggestions for other things for me to think about. And having that opportunity, as Amy said, to stretch and grow, it's just been a wonderful experience. And I'm really sad to see you go because of your, your commitment, your, just endless enthusiasm and genuine interest. It's rare. And we, we've caught it a couple of times, lightning in a bottle here with certain people. But you will be missed.
Thank you.
And I wish you the best.
Thank you, Allison.
In the next chapter of your life. It's gonna be exciting.
As I do for you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
She's in good hands with us though, right?
Yes, she certainly is.
I want to thank you for all your years of service. I've been watching school committee or attending school committee for over twenty years. This, Juliet's twenty-five, and I believe she was on the board with you.
Yes, I remember well.
When you began. But watching different boards over the years, I've been very impressed the way you handle things. If things are going off course, if they're varying in different direction, you can very politely and diplomatically condense it really quickly. Not everyone can have that tact and business acumen, so I, I think you've done wonderful things for the school.
Well, thank you, Marilyn. I'm really glad you've come back onto the board, you know? Without any kids in the district, but still caring, and I think that says the world about you. You know, I think the reason why I've been able to, to run meetings the way you refer to is because we all have an equal voice and we all respect each other and we always have. And I think my job is to be the servant of the meeting and the servant of the people, so...
You've done a great job.
Yeah, thank you.
I had to keep it simple, but I basically...
Don't ask.
You know, I, I appreciate the fact of having somebody with business background and a financial background. And I think taxpayers, you know, it's always been clear when there's been, you know, questions about our finances and stuff like that, that you've had a good grasp on it and that you really did, you know, keep people going and understanding that what we were doing was important. So, you know, congratulations.
Yeah, thanks.
Good luck with your next steps and, and we'll miss you.
Thanks, Bill. You, you know, you make it easy to do all that, right? So, it's really right back at you. I think, you know, as it relates to the finances, we're all taxpayers and, you know, our job here is to balance what we spend with what is reasonable and what's the return. And, you know, we've put a real priority on the academic focus because that's where the return is most easily demonstrated. And boy, look at the schools our kids are getting into and look at these programs that we offer. I mean, the breadth of programs, we're a small school district, but, you know, we're able to do that because we are responsible with the budget. And Bill, you do an awful lot of that hard work. So, thank you for, I'm glad you're still involved and thank you for all your service.
No early retirement for you.
I think he already died once, didn't he?
Twice.
Yeah, twice, sorry. I'm keeping roping you back in.
Like I said, hire good people and get out of the way.
That's all.
I will speak tonight too, so...
All right.
You've just been a constant since I've started working here.
Sorry.
No, well, you don't need to apologize.
She didn't say constant what?
No, I just remember...
Exactly.
She stopped. She felt like stop right there.
He's being very diplomatic, Miss Carter.
Well, you were involved in the interview process. You were one of the first school committee members that I met. And, you know, since that time, you've just been very approachable in anything that we needed. You were always there and I'll miss having you around.
I'm still around.
Yeah.
But thank you, Janet. You do a great job keeping the, the committee on track. We appreciate that.
Yes, you do.
Makes it easy for us.
Great.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'd like to add, you, I, I'm not going to say all of them, but you have garnered some of the most, the nicest back compliments kind of that I've ever heard, and several of them. As the news started spreading around town that you would not be seeking reelection, people have said to me in numerous different ways, but he does such a good job, I'm shocked he's not rerunning. And I thought, to have a myriad of people walk up to me and say that, I must share that with you. And I personally, I tend to ramble because I see life as a story and you will take everything. The way you can synthesize an entire meeting in a few words, to me, is a marvel. I shall miss that.
Thank you, Debbie.
Thank you.
Well, you know, you have a special place in my heart for dragging me into this. Not kicking and screaming, but I'll always remember you and be very appreciative of your support and all that you've done for me here. So, thank you. And, you know, the, the community, you mentioned the community. I, I thank you to the community. We've said this a lot of times, a lot of us at this table, but we've had the community. This, this job has been easy. You know, I, I do encourage especially parents of younger schoolchildren to get involved because this job is not that hard. I mean, we have the community support. It's a education supportive town. So, the community's been great and I, I do want to thank the community at large for their support. And thank you personally.
Well, it's their children that we have at the heart of all of this. And they recognize it.
So, I'm gonna go last. And I'm not sure what, what else there is to say. I, the first time I met you, Michelle and I were room moms together in first grade at the holiday party. And she said, oh, my husband's in the kindergarten classroom. And you were making gingerbread houses with Brian's class.
Sure I was.
You were. And I was like, wow, a dad is in here making gingerbread houses. And you have remained that involved in Foxborough Public Schools since then. And our children, your children are in eleventh and twelfth grade. Our kids are almost done and have gone all the way through. And you've just done everything. You, the playground at the Taylor School, all the time you spend up on the scaffolding in the pouring rain, at the football games, taping other things for Foxborough Cable Access, doing the concessions at Spring Fling for many years, roping me into Career Day at the Ahern School year after year, and encouraging me, six years ago, to throw my name into the, the hat when there was vacancy on the school committee and to kind of challenge me to come out of my personal comfort zone because you thought I had a contribution to make. So, I'm grateful to you for that because it's been a real challenge and a great experience. And I've certainly learned a lot from you. You've been both a mentor and a great friend. And because you take the cake, we have a little something for you.
Take the cake.
It's really cake to make us all feel better because we're sad you're leaving. And we have, our friends are here to share...
Isn't that nice? Thank you, friends.
...in the commemoration of your last school committee meeting.
Could you kind of lift up the cake a little bit so we...
No, absolutely.
Just, just, wait a minute, wait a minute.
Oh, boy.
Don't tell her too much.
Yeah, I wasn't doing that.
I got it.
I got it.
Thank you so much for all the time and energy and effort you've put in, and thank you to Michelle and Bruce, Michelle and Brian and Brady for all the hours.
And we have a special certificate of appreciation for you to have a special place at home, as well as a special gift for you.
We still have to cover other matters, too, you guys. We have one more thing.
I think Tina is all done, she's not going to say anything else.
I think we can breeze right through that.
You know, just two things, maybe three, about Tina, as I've tried to do with each of you guys, but, you know, if Debbie and I teamed up to help lead the committee in my earlier years, I think, Tina, you and I have been a great team the last few years, and I remember.
Well, we've all been part of a team.
Absolutely, absolutely. But I remember the joint Board of Selectmen School Committee meeting when we had to appoint an interim, and there were two really excellent candidates who were presented, I think, as finalists for that seat. And, you know, we kind of went around the table, I think, voting, if I remember, and there was a tie vote, or at least equal consensus or mutual admiration about both candidates. And I remember for some reason it ended up coming to me, and I said, well, I said, I think both candidates would do an extremely good job, but I said, there's one candidate who I know the public adores and who's actually written to me and called me and said, you know, we think she'd be great, and that was you. And needless to say, your accomplishments and contributions here have been outstanding as well, so, thank you for that. I don't know, this is all a little overwhelming, guys, and I'm sorry it's taken so long. This is the way to go out for sure. Don't wait for an election to kick you out, but go out. I'm really blown away by all the nice comments, I am going to miss this.
Firework is coming next, right?
Say it again.
Firework's a-coming next.
But it's been a joy. My mother was a volunteer in the public schools. She started an arts program when our school district didn't have money for the arts, and maybe it's her genes that got me interested, but she was a school teacher. Anyway.
And we, your family and friends, are proud of your commitment and your contribution.
Very nice of you guys all to come out, thank you. I've had a lot of support from my close friends, so. Any other matters we want to take up?
I have one request.
Yes.
If everybody would allow this, I happen to be the person who took the photograph that is on the cake before he was a school committee member. I would love to, before we cut the cake, to take the family of four around the cake, please.
Okay. Anything else?
I think we're good. We talked about a lot of good stuff.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? Good night.
Hey! Woo hoo!